We can get going. This is Council Chair Charlie Zelli, and this is the meeting of the Metropolitan Council's Committee of the Whole this day, November 17th, 2021. Welcome, everybody. As you know, this is a virtual meeting, and we're doing that because I have deemed it still prudent to do during the pandemic. And we're doing that under Minnesota Statute Section 13D.021, where we're allowed to have these telephone or electronic meetings. If you are joining us from the public, please feel welcome to submit comments to public.info at metc.state.mn.us, and we will respond promptly. And no further ado, to establish a quorum, I'll ask Bridgette to take a roll call. Bridgette?
Counselmember Barber. Barber?
She may be coming in late.
Chambliss is here.
Coming?
Here.
Ferguson?
Here.
Fredston?
Here.
Gonzalez?
Here.
Johnson?
Here.
Lee?
Here.
Lilligrin?
Here.
Lindstrom?
Here.
Mussey?
Here.
Turner?
Here.
Bento?
Here.
Wolf?
Here.
Zarin?
Present.
Chair Zelli?
Here. Thanks, everyone. We have a quorum. As you can see from the agenda that was sent out in advance, we have two interesting information items that relate to each other. So unless there's an objection, we will assume we will deem the agenda to be approved. First off, though, we need approval of the minutes from the meeting on November 3rd, 2021, the regular meeting of the Committee of the Whole. Is there a second? Is there a motion and a second to approve the minutes?
Chair Zelli, this is Turner. There's a motion to approve the minutes.
Thank you, Councilmember. Second?
Bento, seconds.
Thank you, Counselmember Bento. Any discussion? And if not, Bridgette, please call the roll.
Counselmember Barber. Chambliss?
Aye.
Coming?
Aye.
Ferguson?
Aye.
Fredston?
Aye.
Gonzalez?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Lilligrin?
Aye.
Lindstrom?
Aye.
Mussey?
Aye.
Turner?
Bento?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Zarin?
Aye.
Chair Zelli?
Aye. Thank you. The minutes are approved. So as I mentioned, we have two information items, both relating to our Metro Transit Police Department and some of our safety work group activity. I think we certainly will invite clarifying questions along the way, but maybe it'd be good to kind of hear both these information items and then open it up to a general discussion because I think they certainly relate to each other. But first off, we have a report from our Metro Transit Police Work Group, kind of an update on the activity over the past month. And we're going to hear from Councilmember and Work Group Chair Chambliss to kick it off. Ariva, go ahead.
All right. Thank you, Chair Zelli. Yes, our group has been very active, and we have a couple topics for the discussions that we've had in the work group this month that we've covered since October 20th, Committee of the Whole update, and so we'll brief you on that. And we'll talk about some upcoming work plan items as well. The topics that we have covered since October 20th, Committee of the Whole, we included an overview of recent employee feedback, and that included frontline employees engaged during our prior Citizens League process, which had engagement of our process and stakeholders at the Metropolitan Council. We also had an overview of the Metropolitan Transit Police Department employee survey results, and those results gave us some really good feedback, some very eye-opening feedback from a transparent process. And we included an employee panel discussion that was comprised of employee representatives. Those employees were from Metro Transit Safety and Security Committee, the Metro Transit Equity and Inclusion Team, the ATU, TMSA Unions, and full-time officers and supervisors. If you can flip the slide over to page four, at any time, Leah Palmer, you can interject on any details that you or overview of what you heard or what we heard from the employees as well. And of course, we are going to be getting an update from our police department following this presentation. We had approximately 100 frontline employees who were engaged during the Citizens League process, and those themes include the presence on our vehicles and the general availability of prominent security on our light rail and buses and our stations. Demonstratable consequence for behaviors on the system were discussed, as well as safety features that we have on our light rail vehicles and buses in terms of cameras that our operators are able to utilize and safety barriers to keep them safe. There was a concern about an unwelcome environment for passengers, and we want to look at recommendations that we can come up with together on how to make sure that our environment is safe and welcoming. Employees said that they generally felt unsafe and anxious about safety on transit, which is a serious concern that we are taking into consideration for our recommendation to the Metropolitan Council by the work group and on behalf of the work group and its employees. And you'll hear more about that in the next presentation. The police work group conducted a survey in mid-October 2021, and also, we had 118 employees with a 63% response, which is a good response from employees. We had 11 questions that were repeated for consistency from a prior 2020 January survey, and we compared that feedback to the feedback that we had in 2021. And we also added new 2021-only questions per our work group's request and what we had been hearing from our stakeholders. Unfortunately, the comparison showed a decrease in job satisfaction and increase in concern that there are not enough MTPD staff, Metro Transit Police Department staff, and disagreement that referrals and enforcement actions are adequately resolved by other entities, which you'll have a response a little bit later in the discussion. I'm going to pause here. Is there anything, Leah or Leslie, that you want to add to what has been received in terms of employee feedback?
Chair, Councilmember Rivas, thank you for covering all of that. I don't have anything to add at this time.
Okay, thank you. We'll have an opportunity for questions as well or feedback a little bit later in our discussion. Our employee panel overview included participants from, if you can move to the next slide, Transit Safety and Security Committee, where we had a bus operator, Rich Miller, talk about their concerns and their feedback, Metro Transit Equity Inclusion Team, Andrew Kimball, also a bus operator, Leitha Falls from ATU, and Heidi Renton and David Barnhart from TMSA. We heard from full-time officers, Tim Burkholtz and Officer Frank Hens, as well as Lieutenant Mario Roberto. These were very frank discussions and information that we take very seriously from what we heard from them, and we are taking that into consideration for our response and recommendations to improve safety and security and employee satisfaction at the Metropolitan Council. Panel and work group member comments included information about significant concerns, as I said earlier, about their safety and security, and employees who required police assistance felt that the response time was low to issues, and that there was too little presence on the system to effectively support them. We want to improve upon that as a Metropolitan Council. Our officers are leaving for other departments, but most are staying within law enforcement. The work group requested data on staffing levels as well, and we'll present this during the meeting in the second presentation. We want to say that we know the current situation is not unique or isolated to Metro Transit. There are broader systemic issues that are operating, and some are further compounded by the issues that have arisen out of the pandemic. We want a structure for accountability, and we want to leverage our partnerships to address these systemic issues as it affects us. Our panelists offered several ideas for improvement, so in addition to feedback and comments, they did provide ideas for our organization to consider. Next slide, please. The work plan overview. Our charge as a work group was to deliver recommended safety outcomes and strategies to the full council by the end of February and provide monthly updates to the Committee of the Whole and inform them of our recommendations. We have three phases for this work. The first phase was for our kickoff and initial issue identification, which was from August 27th through September 15th, with the second phase ending in December, mid-December, where we reviewed existing policies, practices, and procedures and identified potential recommendations. That review is continuing as a part of this process. And then there's Phase Three, where we will develop and submit recommendations based on what we've heard from our stakeholders to the Metropolitan Council. Next slide, please. Topics discussed today towards developing these recommendations included information that we reviewed by the Citizens League's Final Engagement Report, a presentation by Chief Frizzell of Metro Transit Police Department on his 21st Century Policing, as well as transit agency law enforcement and public safety practices that exist today. We heard about experiences and perspectives regarding public safety and police interactions, and have reviewed the plan to survey employees, and we made recommendations on how to proceed with that survey information, making sure that our survey is comprehensive and includes all stakeholders and got information in a consistent way. Our code of conduct was reviewed, and we looked at community partnerships that Metropolitan Council has and the contracts with our community-based organizations such as a Mother's Love. We've had several updates about Metropolitan Council's homeless action team, and we received one as a part of this work group as well. Since our last update, as we talked about earlier, we added, at the request of the work group, employee perspectives and discussed that. Next slide, please. The dates that you see on this screen reflect our current work plan, which we are going to be adjusting as needed based on the information that we're receiving from our stakeholders. There was a request for information about our interactions with youth, which you will get information about that, as well as how we gather data and govern our work and our process for accountability. We plan to have an open forum for individuals and groups to give us additional feedback and information and an opportunity to provide us with their comments. And then in December 30th, from December 31st to February 28th, we will gather all of this information that we've been collecting and start working on our recommendations to the council. We have several meetings that we will be providing updates to the Committee of the Whole. The next updates are December 15th, January 19th, and February 16th of 2022. At this time, I'm going to be opening up to the council for questions. And questions can be answered in terms of Metropolitan Council staff or to council members. And if I need help, see in your hand, Chair, are you helping with that?
I'll help you, Riva. Any questions for Councilmember Chambliss at this time?
I see Judy Johnson's hand up.
Go ahead, Judy.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Madam Chair. I think this is such a good presentation, and I really like the depth that you went into with all of the stakeholders involved in those interviews and surveys. I think the things you were asking are right on. So I just want to commend everybody who's been involved in this effort. I really appreciate this presentation, and I feel like it's moving in a very good direction. So that's all I want to say. Thank you. Good job.
Thanks.
Go ahead, Councilmember Lindstrom.
Thanks, Councilmember Chambliss. You mentioned that, I think the words you used were eye-opening survey results. What do you think was, just in your opinion, was the most eye-opening?
Well, first of all, I want to say that what was most eye-opening was the candor that employees had with regard to giving us feedback. That really speaks to the work that is being done by all of the planners for this process, for them to feel comfortable to speak very candidly to us about what some of these, you know, sometimes sensitive issues about public safety. So that was eye-opening to me. And to hear the work that still needs to be done in terms of securing safety and security for our employees and also for our bus riders and the people that come into contact with us.
Well, and I don't mean to say this is the end. This is really the ongoing process, and I will kind of second Councilmember Johnson's appreciation, Riva, for your leadership, but also for those on the work group. And a lot of this information is what it is, and it's important for us as policymakers to have our eyes wide open and to deal with all the complexity with great deliberation and yet, you know, not put our head in the sand nor rush to a judgment to make this one step at a time. Because these are kind of taken as a whole, I think we should shift and hear a report from the Metro Transit Police Department. We have Leah Palmer and Captain Aaron Dietz, but maybe to kick it off this conversation, we can start with you, Wes Coystra, the General Manager of Metro Transit, just to kind of set up this conversation and the information, and then we'll kind of come back and ask more questions and kind of have an opportunity for a discussion. So Wes, take it away.
Thank you, Chair and members. I just wanted to mention that the chief has had to drop off the meeting due to some obligations related to his nomination, but he's going to be listening to the recording. And I know that based on our conversations that he is really interested in understanding the feedback the best he can and listening to what the concerns are so that he and his leadership team can respond appropriately to those concerns and issues that are brought forward. He is listening, and we've had many conversations about this, and he's really engaged in this. And unfortunately, he's not be able to be here due to those obligations. The next, the report that you're going to be receiving now is really a quick attempt after the review to provide some data related to some of the questions and issues that were brought up. So you can see some of the data that really apply to those concerns. And with this evening to do that is Captain Dietz of the Police Department and Leah Palmer, also of the Metro Transit Police Department. And again, this is just intended to better inform some of the concerns that were raised in the work group review. So I'm just going to pass it on, I believe, to Captain Dietz at this point. Thank you.
Thank you, General Manager Coystra and Chair Zelli and Councilmembers. Thank you for having us this evening and for your time. We'll put up some slides here for everybody to follow.
Captain Dietz, the slide is up from Greg Ritchie is controlling the slides. I don't know. We have not been in front of this group before, so I thought it would, excuse me, Chair. I thought I would clarify that on the screen is the slides, and you can ask Greg to order the slides as necessary.
Next, can we go to the next slide, please? And we have an introduction, the local and national MTPD budgeting and staffing, attrition and PTSD, crime data and operator assaults, response time, addressing concerns, and moving forward. Next slide. Met Council, Metro Transit, and MTPD leadership hear what employees and those that testified during the police work group are saying. We have opportunities for improvement. Those include department-wide communications from top down, concerns about department attrition rate and staffing, outcomes of police work, jail and decisions that are frustrating, support for police from leadership. And then the survey also revealed some strengths that MTPD will build upon, which are tools and technology, the mission, mottos, and values. Next slide. And at this point, I will turn the slides over to Leah Palmer.
Thank you, Captain Dietz. Chair and Councilmembers, again, thank you for having us here today. The next slides that we're going to go through will lay out some data points, some of which we've been asked for by some council members and some other interested parties, and some of which we believe just provide a context to what's going on here at the department, how things are progressing, and things like that. So to start here, we want to talk about the national landscape for policing. Obviously, May 25th of 2020, with George Floyd's murder, was an absolute watershed point for police-community relations. It changed not only Minneapolis, the state of Minnesota, but really hit globally and really changed, I think, how everyone is interacting. One moment, Captain Dietz, I think, I don't think they're on mute, just FYI. The stress of the pandemic has also been a big factor. Obviously, for over a year and a half now, officers have been trying to handle, how do we interact with the public? How do I keep myself safe? How do I keep the riders safe in sometimes crowded situations in Metro Transit? So it's, you know, it's a lot for them to handle, and it's a lot for all of us to handle, honestly. As mentioned before, there are record number of officers, and they're leaving urban departments typically to go to suburban, ex-urban, outstate departments. We're seeing that nationally. We're seeing that locally, the big cities, Minneapolis, St. Paul. We're also seeing that here at Metro Transit. So much of our work is focused inside these urban areas in Minneapolis and St. Paul that our officers almost identify, I think, as urban officers and feeling that the suburbs and those outstate Minnesota areas provided a little bit different form of policing that they're more comfortable with. So you can see in the graph there, the vacancy rates of not only Minneapolis-St. Paul, but some other like-sized cities across the nation, they're all hovering right around the same. The MTPD is about a 17% vacancy rate, and so we're right there. It's high. We're all battling that labor shortage, particularly in policing. You know, the number of folks that want to be police officers, the number of folks that want to transfer into an urban department. There are a lot of challenges, and we'll talk about that a little bit later on. And why? So, you know, the defund the police movement has impacted officers. I think some officers have concerns that their job won't be there or that their job will so drastically change if funding is withdrawn or a lot of funding is withdrawn, that they won't be able to be effective. Feeling, the perception of being unsafe or unsupported, lower number of officers makes them feel unsafe, you know, is their backup going to be there? Even in our area, Minneapolis and St. Paul, our officers work closely with the MPD, the SPPD, and our suburban partners, and we all rely on one another for backup. We all rely on one another, you know, for potentially dangerous calls and things like that. And so when everyone is short-staffed, it does lead to a feeling for those officers that it's less safe on the street. Sometimes there's a lack of resources. I think we were very fortunate that our employee survey identified, you know, that tools and technology are right there for MTPD officers, that they feel that they've gotten them. You know, we've done the body worn cameras, we've done the real-time information center. There's a lot of training available. Technology has just been a big part of how Chief Frizzell has grown this department. And so for us, you know, we're not feeling that as much as some other officers and departments are. And the final piece is the so-called Clinton cops are able to retire. So in 1996, President Bill Clinton signed the Crime Bill, and there was a lot of money provided to local governments to hire police officers. Those cops are now starting to be able to age out. They're hitting that 20, 25-year mark, and with everything going on, they say, hey, you know what? I'm just going to retire. Luckily, that's again, not the case here, but as other departments are short or looking to hire, they're looking then to offer positions to our officers, what we call a lateral hire when an officer moves from one department to another. So all of these things create challenges across the board for how policing is right now, not only for the MTPD, but of course, locally and nationally. Greg, next slide, please. Thank you. So just some overview of our budget. You can see here, the top chart shows the number of budgeted officers and the number of actual officers. So we've always run a little bit shy of our budget, and we're constantly hiring. Right now, we have openings for both police officers and CSOs. We'd appreciate if you guys want to spread the word about that, just my little plug there for recruiting. But, you know, we're constantly, as everybody is, looking to hire, recruiting the best without lowering our standards. And you can see from the budget numbers down at the bottom, the actual dollars, that I think it's clear to say that we're fiscally responsible, we're not outspending our budget by much or even at all in the last few years. You do see a peak in 2020 of the total budgeted, and that is due to some one-time investments in technology. There was one-time investment in the body worn cameras, of buying the hardware, building out different parts of it, and there was a one-time investment into the real-time information center, the monitors, the workstations, things like that. So that's the reason for that taller red bar there. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. So here we're looking at the MTPD officers, both by month and by year. So the top line graph shows you how many officers we have by year, and that's marked by June of each year. The reason for June, although it sounds random, is that these service lines, the red line, the green line, the A-line, the C-line, those all tend to open up in mid-June. And so what I had wanted to illustrate here is that we do grow our department along with the anticipated opening of these new service lines. So as we are looking to the future with the new lines coming on in the next two or three, four years, especially with the Southwest Extension, you know, we are ramping up and figuring out, you know, how many officers we need, how do we need to staff, what's the best way to get there. You can also see the yellow line on the top graph drops from 100 to about 59. That number of part-time officers is always a little bit fluid, and it really just depends on a particular chief's feeling of the role that part-time officers can play. So, you know, right now, I think that we are in a good place with just shy of 60 part-time officers that supplement particularly at special events and things like that and free up the full-time officers then to cover the street and do their job. So the bottom line graph then shows the MTPD officers by month for this year, running up through October 31st. You can see again that the number has, I would say, decreased significantly from 140 at the start of the year to 116 as of October 31st. It's a point-in-time snapshot, and of course, that reflects everything that I talked about at the beginning, all of those challenges to, you know, the separations of employees. And we'll talk later about what we're doing then to recruit. Next slide. So the demographics of the department, looking at race and ethnicity. I'm very happy to stand here and say that we have been able to maintain the diversity of our department despite these fluctuations in staffing. We're hovering right around that 46, 47% mark, as you can see from the gray, June 2021, working to the left, August 2021, and then in the red, November of 2021. This is a strong place for people of color to work. It's a very welcoming environment. It's very much a pride point for us, and I think that this graph really shows that. In terms of women, women comprise 23% of the full-time officers. So I guess I should point out and be very clear here that the numbers on your screen sheerly reflect people of color, and those can be both men and women. Just looking at women, 23% of full-time officers are women. I'd like to point out that a quarter of all of our CSOs are women, which is really a wonderful number to see. So, and then overall, part-time, full-time, CSOs and civilians were 22% women, which is really a very good number, again, in policing. Next slide. So let's talk about attrition, which is of course a major concern for the officers that was demonstrated in the survey. It's pretty clear, I think, by these graphs that we are seeing an increased attrition rate. As you can see on the left there, it's 3.2 employees leaving, our full-time officers leaving per month. That's three times what it has been over the past few years. So clearly, it's important and it's something that we need to be talking about and looking at. We can see a high number of officers that have resigned. You can see a high number of officers that are taking a disability retirement, which we'll talk about in a little bit as well. I think the good news here is that our termination rate has remained very, very low. We hire good employees and they fill out their training, they get here and they do a good job. And I think that's a real testament to our Training and Hiring Division as well. Next slide, please, Greg. So in terms of looking at the full-time sworn officers, and that is everybody from the Chief as a sworn officer down to our command staff, the captains and lieutenants, the sergeants, whether they're on the street or in other units, and then all of our officers. So you can see there how it's divided out in the top right, the FTE Academy, five. Those are our five brand-new recruits that are currently in training, in classroom training. As we speak, I believe they just started about two weeks ago. The full-time equivalent specialty units on the top left, that's going to be all of the staff that is in any of the more or less non-p patrol units. So whether that's the administrative command level staff, whether that's officers who are assigned to investigations, officers that are assigned to the real-time information center, they can be in all different places. You can see only 16% of our officers really aren't assigned to the street and aren't on leave. And I think that that's a pretty good number, to be honest. We're not, I would say that it's a good thing that we're not, you know, top-heavy in terms of administration. So the one below that where it says FTE TSI. The TSI is the Transit Safety Initiative that you've probably heard about back in July of this year, where through the General Manager, we were able to secure additional funding for more officer positions, for more community service officer positions, and able to increase our, what we call our authorized strength, from 141 full-time officers to 156 officers. It was, it's absolutely, we're very grateful to have received those dollars and to be looking forward to having more officers and filling those positions as we continue to hire. Other than those 15 openings that were given to us through the additional infusion of money, we have 22 other open positions, and that's those ones that come from, you know, the resignations, the retirements, those positions that we haven't yet been able to fill. And the FTEs on leave, 18 officers. You can see below where I've defined what that is. Someone gets injured in the line of duty, they're on family medical leave, and that will include any sort of like a PTSD claim, things like that. New babies, new family members, military administrative leave or COVID leave. And I'm very happy to stand here right now and report that right now, we have zero employees out on COVID leave. That's a very good feeling as it's a very difficult time in the pandemic again. 71 officers assigned to patrol. So that's really the breakdown of where our resources are allocated. Next slide. So looking a little more at those post-traumatic stress disorder claims. We all know, we've all seen the headlines in the papers, that all over the place, locally, nationally, those PTSD claims are skyrocketing for any number of reasons. Part of it in Minnesota is a change in state law. In 2019, the legislature passed a new law that said that for first responders, including police officers, PTSD can be seen as primarily a function of the job. And so it makes it a little bit easier to file for PTSD disability because of that change. So 2020, of course, you know, the number goes up, and I'd like to point out, of course, in 2021, this is as of November 9th, and so hopefully we don't see anymore, but that's of course not guaranteed. So we do know back in March, again, the pandemic started, I'm sorry, March of 2020, the pandemic started. We had civil unrest beginning after May 25th, when George Floyd was murdered. So all of this kind of leads to a situation where PTSD claims unfortunately are becoming more common and we do, we are working very hard to address mental health, and I will talk about that in some other slides. But again, with 21st century policing models, one of the pillars is officer wellness. That is, we take that to heart here. Helping officers and helping all employees achieve physical health, achieve a better mental health state is really something that is held up on a pedestal for us. And I, for one, as an employee here, are very grateful that we talk about mental health. Next slide, please. Looking at crime data, as you can see here, it has gone down. Of course, ridership has also gone down with the pandemic, so naturally, fewer people means, you know, fewer crimes, potentially. I'd also like to point out, and I don't have the exact breakdown at this time, that we do have, as any agency does, as any city does, have people that offend more than once. So this isn't to say that there's 511 individuals out there causing a ruckus. It's that there were 511 of these particular types of crimes. And, you know, within a category, say theft, there may have been five people doing, you know, five each. And so that number, you know, may not be reflective of a single person at a single time. So looking at the last four years or the last three years plus this year, you can see that the Part 1 crime, which is what's at the top there, those very serious crimes, have held steady. And as a result, then the Part 2 crime, which are the less serious crimes, have also then held steady in partnership with that. So the Part 2 crimes are going to be those crimes that are the disorderly conduct. It's going to be those violations of the code of conduct on transit. So smoking, the liquor, things like that. You're going to see some lower-level thefts, just things that are disruptive. They're those nuisance crimes, and they're the ones that, partly because of their sheer number and partly because it creates an environment that feels unsafe. It feels uncomfortable, and I think that, I think we've talked about previously, how it is that the public and our employees react to that. And it's, you know, it's something that, again, we're continuing to work on, we're continuing to address. Next slide. Operator assaults are, of course, important to all of Metro Transit. Operators have a very difficult job of going out and not only navigating the roads in a very large vehicle. Bless them, I could never do it, and I'm always in awe of the bus drivers. And they're, you know, they're out there with the public, and sometimes that's a wonderful thing, and sometimes they are in a little bit of danger. So we see here these numbers where the yellow is those misdemeanors, and that typically is something like a verbal threat, inappropriate language that's directed at an operator, something like that, where of course they're going to feel uncomfortable, they're going to feel unsafe. They're not hurt, which is a good thing, but it's still a crime. A gross misdemeanor is typically when someone spits on an operator. That's an automatic gross misdemeanor under straight law, and so it's taken, of course, very seriously as well. And a felony, very serious, the most serious type of crime, it's a physical assault, an operator is injured, there's a threatened weapon, you know, either they say they have one or they actually show one. And unfortunately, those felonies are on their way up as well. Now, the other way that a crime can become a felony is through an enhancement. So there are different areas of state law where you have a certain number of crimes and it automatically becomes a felony, no matter if the person was injured or not. So in this particular case, if someone has two previous convictions for an assault on their record, and then they assault a bus driver, even if, you know, that bus driver isn't injured, even if it's a verbal threat or that inappropriate language, that third misdemeanor automatically becomes a felony. And so state law, I think, really has our back there, and it's wonderful. And that's, I think, also where we need the other parts of the criminal justice system to help and to ensure that those convictions go through and that we can better protect our employees. And then speaking with the Lieutenant of Investigations, she also did point out that some of what she's seen in these cases has to do with the fair enforcement changes and the mask enforcement changes. So back in 2020 during the pandemic, for much of the year, if not the entire year, or the entire part of the pandemic, we went to a rear boarding, and so that was to limit, you know, exposure to the operators. So passengers would board through the rear, take their ride, and then exit also through the rear door of the bus. As we switch to, go back to front-loading, as the pandemic sort of waned a little bit, now operators are reminding folks, you have to pay your fare, and some people are getting hostile about that. That's sort of always been, and it's, we're seeing, I guess, a little bit of a resurgence from, if you compare it to last year. The other part of the uptick this year is the mask enforcement. Operators ask someone to put on a mask, they even provide a mask, and somebody becomes hostile or upset that they have to wear a mask. It's playing out at all levels of our society right now. Someone gets upset at Target and causes a ruckus. Same thing is happening on our transit system. Somebody gets upset about being asked to put on a mask and it escalates. Next slide, please. So switching over to our calls for service, I'm going to talk about calls for service as well as our response times here in the next few slides. So there's three ways that a call can come in. First, it could be an employee or an operator calling in and reporting a situation that they would like police to respond to. Those numbers have really held steady. I think that we have wonderful employees here who are very aware and aren't afraid to ask for assistance from the police. The green bar is those officer-initiated calls. Typically, what those are, are things where they check in with an operator. They follow the operator on their route for a while and ensure safety. They go to a garage, check in and say hi, and make sure that everything is safe, those types of activities. And then a call for service from the public is basically anything else. It's typically going to be crime, or they need an officer response for a report of some variety. And so it can also be an officer who is just on the course of their regular patrol, sees someone drinking on a bus and says, you can't do that. That then goes to the dispatcher, and the dispatcher enters a call for service. It shows up like a public call because of, because it's a crime, essentially, rather than more of a proactive sort of check-in with an employer or facility. And next slide, please. So calls for service by priority type. Calls are organized into three different categories. The Priority 1 calls are going to be your most serious types of calls. They're ones where a suspect is still on site, someone is very injured, there's a weapon, any of those, you know, serious crimes that we talked about on the previous slide. Someone walking on tracks, and the silent panic alarms from the operators as well. Those are the ones where you're going to see an officer typically, you know, they're going to have their lights and sirens on to respond as quickly as they possibly can, and we'll look at the numbers of minutes it takes to respond on the next slide. But you can see that those Priority 1 calls are thankfully a small portion that has remained consistent since 2019 in terms of what we need to respond to. The Priority 2s, you can see there are defined as, you know, crashes, the welfare checks, someone's in crisis, someone is having, you know, their substance abuse, they're sleeping, things like that, disorderly conduct, and those sorts of prohibited acts that I mentioned before. And then the Priority 3 are those crimes that aren't in progress. Someone, you know, gets back to the parking lot and finds out that their window was smashed in and some things were taken from their car. No suspect information, no one on sight, so the officer goes and they take a report, things of that nature. So those Priority 3s have actually increased a little bit this year and shifted around a little bit, but mostly we're staying the same. And it's good to see that those Priority 1s are staying the same as well. Next slide. So going to, how long does it take for an officer to get to the scene of an incident? And this is from the time of dispatch to the time that they arrive. And you can see, even with the fluctuations in staffing that we're having, it's really remained about the same. And I'd like to thank our officers for that. Honestly, I think it is a testament to them, you know, figuring out where is it that I need to be, where is it that I'm important that I am, you know, using our data-driven policing and knowing that a certain area has seen more calls lately, and so assigning some officers to that particular area, so they're there, they're right there, they can respond quickly. All of those things lead into us maintaining about that five-minute range for response time. Next, you know, the yellow is the Priority 2, hovers right around eight. And then the Priority 3, again, those are going to be your report calls, those are the ones where there's nothing dangerous happening immediately or going to happen. You know, that's gone down a little bit, which is great, because that means that people aren't waiting around, even if it's, you know, a crime such as, again, that car break-in. People don't want to wait around and wait for an officer forever. That's not fun for anyone. People have stuff to do, right? And it's an uncomfortable situation. So we're getting there in 11.26 minutes this year, which is a really great number. Next slide, please. So what are we doing to address the issues? What are we doing to address the results of our employee survey? What are we doing to address the concerns that were expressed in the last police workgroup meeting? There's some things that we're looking at, and there's some things that we already are doing. And we should be talking about that, because there's some great work and some great planning. Um, and we should, um, we should be talking about that because there's some great work and some great planning happening. Uh, foremost, the advocating for administrative citations at the Minnesota Legislature. Again, the session in 2022 that will be coming back up, we'll be hoping that the legislature passes that so that non-sworn employees can write tickets for fare evasion. Um, and just free up our officers to go and do, um, you know, higher level law enforcement need. Um, again, getting to those priority one calls perhaps even faster if possible. And having, um, you know, a, a different type of role of employee handling the fare checks, handling the fare evasions. Um, it really works out both ways, both from helping the public and from allowing the officers to handle other types of crime. Looking at installing monitor screens on 200 buses. And those are the types of screens that reflect back at, um, a rider. And, um, you know, show that the camera is recording, there's a screen that shows them. Um, and that sort of thing really helps deter, um, negative behaviors. If you think about it, when you go to Target and you're at the self-checkout and there's the, the screen up there, it shows you checking yourself out. Um, you're not doing anything wrong, but I always look at it and I'm like, ooh. And then I think maybe I shouldn't have worn my pajamas today. That's a whole different thing. So, um, so that's what we're looking at, right? Is, is a, using a deterrent type of thing to, um, help folks remember to behave well on our buses. Um, we're exploring contracted security to supplement the MTPD, um, that is very much in its early discussion. Um, so we're also expanding that CSO program again, through the infusion of extra funds from the general manager this year. We have open hiring for CSOs continually, um, looking for those folks that are interested in law enforcement. They're in school to be a law enforcement officer and they want to be part-time employees here, um, and help out the police department. Development expansion of the real-time information center to support patrol. I can't say enough about the wonderful work that Arctic does. Um, they are instrumental in, in helping the public, in helping our employees and, uh, helping our officers handle situations more quickly and more efficiently. The body worn cameras, those are signed for both full-time officers, part-time officers and those community service officers. We, um, uh, we began that program in September of 2020 and we have over 110,000 videos at this time. Um, it's just, it's been wonderful. Um, again, with the general manager increasing the authorized strength from 141 to 156. Going back to that health and wellness piece, um, there are many actions that we've taken. Um, Chief Razzell has authorized employees to use the gym either over here at, um, Haywood Building or over at Transfer Road. If there's enough staff on the street, if call load is quiet, um, for civilians, if your work is, you know, under control with your supervisor's approval, you can go and use the gym for a half an hour over your lunch. And it's an, it's enabling employees to get healthy, especially, I'm going to go ahead and say for civilians. I sit all day, right? Um, and so do the officers, you know, they're in and out of their squad, they're sitting, they're driving around. Um, and so are they're standing at a platform, you're not moving. So this sort of, um, new policy from the chief is, is really important. We're also contracting a wellness coach, um, and she has already helped us a little bit with, um, some workout videos, short five-minute workout videos we have posted on our SharePoint site. Um, healthy eating, some tips about sleeping, some tips about managing stress, some tips about, um, you know, family issues, all of that stuff. And again, we're really trying to drive a conversation that isn't very common in law enforcement. It's, um, you know, a lot of times in law enforcement, people don't want to talk about that, that health piece. They don't want to talk about, I'm, I'm not feeling good, I'm, I'm stressed about a situation, I'm still trying to work through something. Um, when we have difficult, um, calls for service, uh, the lieutenant, the sergeant, uh, will hold a debrief after the event a few days later. So for instance, um, out here on, uh, the corner of Fifth Street and Sixth Avenue, um, right outside of the Haywood Building, there's a terrible hyper, um, high-speed vehicle that crashed, hit a woman on a scooter. The woman unfortunately died and our officers, because it's right here, were the first ones to respond. Um, and shaken as anyone would be, um, it was quite a scene. And so a few days later, the cap, or the lieutenant got together, held a debrief, let's talk about it. Um, and that's, um, becoming more common in law enforcement, which is wonderful. Um, and it's something that we've really put a lot of priority on. We're also reprioritizing our research employment, right? So we have 118 full-time officers, how do we best use those folks? And, um, you can again, see on the previous chart where we're not heavy on administration. We have our four divisions, which are professional standards and training, which is Captain Dietz. We have our patrol division, we have our investigations division, and we have our administrative and budget division. And utilizing those divisions the best we can, knowing that patrol is what we do, right? That's what police departments do. We get out and we keep the public safe. But we need those, those other supporting divisions and people as well. So what's the best way to use those? The increased text for safety really helps our writers and our employees, um, report things where they don't feel safe. They don't want to make an actual phone call to 911, maybe they don't want to be overheard, things like that. They can send in a text, it goes to dispatch and gets relayed to officers. Um, and then we do have a dedicated investigator just for operator assaults. And that person also follows up with the operators, let them know what's going on, you know, in the case, if it is, if they're able to charge it, things like that. Um, and I think that that has helped, um, the, the police department's relations with the operators and help the operators understand because being a crime victim is a terrible thing. You can see our recruitment strategies over there on the right. Um, the good news is, is that, um, colleges are starting to reopen to on-campus learning. And so to the degree possible, Captain Dietz, um, and some others have been able to go out and hold those onsite career fairs. They have their table, they've got their video, um, all of that business to go out and in-person recruit. Um, and where they aren't able to, they have a bucket of goodies that they send over to that school, um, to help at least facilitate some interest in the Metro Transit Police Department. This year we began on a relationship with marketing over here at Metro Transit, um, which has just been wonderful. Um, Captain Dietz and Kelsey Stones have been working to really expand the recruitment and marketing efforts and make it much more robust and we're getting wonderful support from them. Marketing ads, a new recruitment video that's fresh and exciting. Um, you know, on the bus, on the light rail, um, I saw one picture of, I can't remember which transit center it was, but it was like now hiring and it has a picture of an operator and it has a picture of an officer. You know, all of us are hiring, let's work together, let's get it out there, that Metro Transit, Metro Transit Police Department, we're looking for you. We're exploring the possibility of hiring incentives for police officers. Um, you may be aware of the hiring incentive program for operators. Um, we're looking at something similar, those details are still being worked out. And then ensuring standards for officers continue to be met, um, and that's been a little bit difficult in this hiring environment. We know that we want an officer who can do the job. We know that we want an officer who has character, who has integrity. You can teach someone, um, you know, how to do certain things. You can teach someone how to write a ticket, you can teach someone how to, um, ask for fares. But you can't teach someone integrity, you can't teach someone character. Um, and so that's what we're looking at as we're hiring and we're looking for those really quality individuals. And as you can see from our, our termination rate, we're being successful there and, and that's of course, a goal to continue. So that is my presentation. Um, at this time, I'm of course happy to take questions, Captain Dietz is available. Um, Chief Staff and the General Manager are here also. Um, we have Sergeant Johnson from the Administrative Services Division. So lots of us here to, to help answer your questions.
Leah and Captain Dietz, thank you so much for such a thorough, uh, report. Uh, let's open it up for questions for any of or all of the above. Councilmember Johnson, did you just wave your hand?
Uh, you can read my body language, very good, Mr. Chair. Um, again, really, really great report. Um, you know, kind of early on in the presentation, I was talking about our officers needing to feel more supported. Um, and, you know, can you just kind of go into, you know, some of the things, especially, you know, maybe as in working with the chief that the Met Council members themselves or as a body that, you know, we could be doing at the high level that would, you know, demonstrate our support, you know, certainly in word, but also in deed. And, you know, I, I think right now, let me say it this way, it's tough for our community, wherever you may be in community, when it comes to public safety, policing, um, rights for all people, um, disparities, tragedies, on and on. But what could we be doing? What are we learning that this council should take note of when it comes to supporting our officers in the work that they do each day?
Uh, through the chair, Councilmember Johnson, thank you for asking that. Uh, that is a very important question, um, and we greatly, greatly appreciate it. Um, I think, I think there's two parts to that. I think, um, one thing is, is that we as a department need to do a better job of relaying to, um, all the staff that, that we are getting that support. So, um, you know, when we are, um, you know, allocated money for a major funding, if we, um, you know, have support to do XYZ project, those are the things that you are doing to support us and that we need to be passing along to the rest of the staff to say, hey, this great thing is happening, the Metro Trin, or the Met Council gets where we're at. Um, I have seen some comments, um, from officers, um, that maybe opportunities for ride-alongs to go out, um, with an officer and, and just experience what a little bit of their job looks like. Um, but I think, um, I think that's a really good question and I think it's something that maybe we should circle back on. Looks like Wes has, uh, something else to say there.
Yeah, go ahead, Wes.
Yeah, I would like just to, uh, emphasize something Leah said about, you know, part of this is we need to do a better job of re, of connecting, uh, the police department with, with the council and that can be done by, you know, we have body worn cameras but for the council, we have, uh, we have in- increased resources but for the council. Uh, there's so many ways that the council demonstrates its support of the police department that may not be evident to the officer on the street because they don't follow the governance processes, uh, that, that we have. And I think we can do a better job, and I'm speaking to myself and I'm speaking for the chief and for others of doing that. There are other ways that you can, uh, that you can show your interest. There's award ceremonies, there's, uh, there's graduation ceremonies. They notice attendance to those and, and I, I think you're typically invited, it's been more difficult during COVID, I realize. Uh, but I think attendance to those, those ceremonies and attendance to those events and taking time to speak to officers at those events is, is really noticed and, and appreciated. I, I'm kind of seeing that coming off, uh, visits to, uh, 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 some of our garages this week. And, and you, you, you think when you visit there, that's not a big deal for them, but they, it really is acknowledgement to them and to their work and their appreciation for the work. So those are a couple of ways and, and, uh, and again, I think we can do a better job of connecting the dots of what all the council does for, for the police department to the officers who may not be aware of how those processes work.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you for, uh, your, your insights. I would say too, when I was, um, on the Plymouth City Council, um, we were very connected, of course, through, to the chief and through the leadership there and, and to the rank and file. And every now and then too, you know, they'd invite us in and, uh, it would be of course, a publicly noticed meeting. But, you know, they'd demonstrate things for us or kind of do, not a full citizens academy, that's something different. But something we, I don't know, our plates are probably full, but those are very valuable too, when it comes to public relations. But bringing us into their space and showing us how things work and demonstrating the equipment that we may have purchased or just get, you know, meeting them when they're at. And yes, the ride-alongs are really valuable. I, I have to admit, I wanted to do one, but because of COVID, I guess I just was part of that. Let's hoping that it would end soon, soon, and here we are still. But I do want to do one, I'm sure others have already done them. Um, but if that's ever a possibility where there's a, you know, a meeting room and, you know, some of their facilities that we could get, gather and just be in their space and hear about the newest thing they're working on or just, you know, stand in space and see the equipment, that'd be kind of cool.
Great, great thoughts. Uh, thank you for that and thank you Wes and Leah for thinking about ways to engage council members. Um, Councilmember Sterner, you had your hand up?
Yes, thank you, Chair. I, that was a great discussion. Those are some of my concerns as well. Uh, but what I wondered about is like when we have our officers, are we, are we paying?
I'm missing the audio. I don't know if others are as well. Yeah, so, um,
Okay. Okay, I've just, I'll, I'll rekindle, repeat, I just was wondering if there's things we could do to retain our officers better? Like is there, is there rates of pay better, chances of advancement, um, morale kind of things that, uh, that makes it more of a stronger place to work for Metropolitan, um, Transit than, than other places?
Yeah, Wes, can you take that?
Yeah, let me take a shot at that. I think that, uh, we base our, our, our pay on like, uh, specialty police forces like, like the University of Minnesota and the MAC. Uh, and, but I think we're in a really different time right now. Uh, we have, at least as, as Leah mentioned, uh, we have a lot of lateral moves occurring. There's a lot of, a lot of, uh, significant incentives that are being offered to officers to move from one department to another department, uh, for, with hiring bonuses and, and ease of, of, of entering those departments. And, uh, we're all recruiting the same people. So our market isn't simply, our marketplace for hiring police officers and for keeping officers isn't just focused on like specialty police forces. So I think, uh, this is, this is the same sort of thing we're running into with the, with the, uh, operators as well. We're in a unique marketplace right now. It's not just police, it's not just operators. It's mechanics and it's other sectors all over that are struggling with this. And I think we're, I think your question you're raising is really a good one. Uh, what do we do in this new environment, uh, uh, to, to be more competitive, uh, both in retention and in hiring?
Okay, thank you very much.
Certainly retention strat, retention strategies are really, really key, not just attracting. Um, uh, Councilmember Wolf, did you have your hand up?
I, I did, Mr. Chair, thank you. Um, I would urge my colleagues, if you haven't already, to look at the data from the, the, uh, um, work group meeting on November 5th that has some of the survey questions and what the answers were. I'm looking forward to getting more complete information on that. But I think it's important, we did, nothing, nothing's been brought up about those actual results, but only 10% of our police officers feel like the council members support them. And it's over 60% that think the council doesn't support them. That, that's, that's a pretty bad result. And only 28% think that MTPD leadership cares about them. And in this environment where everybody's hiring, if people don't feel like their leaders care about them, they will leave. And so it doesn't matter how many, uh, recruiting videos you have or what your authorized strength is, if you can't get people to come and work here or if the ones that you have are, are leaving. I'm, I would kind of like to hear a little more about what we're doing to, to, as, as, at least within the police department leadership to make our cops feel like the leadership cares about them, not, I, I don't want to hear about, uh, recruiting videos. I want to hear what are we actually doing to show the people that we care about them and that they should stay?
Great point. Thank you.
Also, Mr. Chair, I have another question as well, or a couple of other questions.
Sure, go ahead Wendy.
So Leah mentioned that, that, uh, people can work out during work. But if we're short-staffed, how often is it that there's enough people that are, our police officers are actually getting to work? Because if you're offering a benefit that nobody can ever use, it, it actually ends up being a negative because people go, oh yeah, they tell me I have this, but I can't even actually do it. So you talked about the overall staffing, but for individual shifts, how often are you overstaffed on your shift?
Uh, through the chair, Councilmember Wolf, I think that's a really good question. Um, I honestly, I, I don't know off the top of my head. I'm more than happy to get back to you with, um, sort of what the, the staffing plays out like on a, on a regular basis.
Thank you.
Uh, Councilmember Lindstrom, did you have your hand up?
I did, thanks. One of the things I'm interested in seeing, I, I did have the pleasure of doing a ride-along right before the pandemic hit, but I didn't get a chance to see the real-time information center. So I think that would be really fascinating to see. So I think that would be really fascinating to see. Leah, you had a slide that talked about operator assaults and those numbers were really striking to me. At the felony level, we went from two felonies on operators in 2019 to 11 in 2020 and 21 in 2021. And you, you mentioned that there may have been a change in state law that said if there's three assaults, then it's automatically a felony. It wasn't clear if that's the reason for the jump or a partial reason for the jump. And then the, the other thing on that same chart for gross misdemeanors, we went from 72 in 2019 to 45 in 2020 and 37 in 2021, which I'm wondering if part of that could be attributed, and I think you mentioned that, that it's automatically a gross misdemeanor if an operator is spit upon. And I'm curious to know if the reason for that dramatic decline is the installation of the Plexiglas guards on most of our buses. And then my third question, and this is a lot, sorry, but my third question is on the, the last part of those bar, the, the bar graphs, the misdemeanors, and they, they kind of went up and down. 103 in 2019, down to 87 and then back up to 109 for misdemeanors. But you also said that part of that is the code of conduct violations. And some of our code of conduct violations, I imagine are crimes, but some are not crimes? Like, I don't know, playing music, you know, is a, is classified as a crime? Or not putting on a mask, I don't know if that's a crime. So if you could, you could explain those numbers for me a little bit better?
Through the chair, Councilmember Lindstrom, yeah, great questions. So I'll start with the misdemeanors. So in these particular cases where it comes to an operator assault, typically those misdemeanor cases are some sort of a threat. I'm going to beat you up or I'm going to hit you, some sort of inappropriate language, cussing, that sort of thing, cussing out the operator. And so you see that number fluctuate a little bit. Again, I think the reason it went down in 2020 was partly because of that, that rear boarding. People just didn't have the interaction with the, the driver up front. In terms of those gross misdemeanors, the operators are spit upon. I can't say for sure, but I do think you're on to something there with the Plexiglas barriers. Undoubtedly, it's keeping the operators safer. I would say in terms of just, you know, preventing that transmission of bodily fluids. And finally, with the, the felonies, I don't offhand know how many of the felony cases are a result of the third assault automatically being enhanced to a felony. I can try to find out for you. I don't even know if we track it that way, but, but I can definitely look into it. And honestly, I mean, I don't, I don't exactly know why the uptick in felonies. I will say that I do think that having those screen monitors mounted, which would be near the bus driver, I think will help deter some folks from acting out because they'll be able to look and see right there. First of all, there's a camera, second of all, you know, oh wait, I know I'm being recorded. And I think it will provide a bit of a deterrence. I can certainly look into these numbers more though and get back to you.
Wes, do you have something to add?
Yeah, I was just going to mention that, and this isn't about hard data. I'm going to reflect a little bit on what I've heard from the operators recently when I, when I've spoken with them. And they've, they've said that, and so this is subjective, but, but I want to try to return it to the feedback that we're getting from operators. They're saying that things have gotten worse since the pandemic. And they talk about a tired public, a frustrated public, a, a public that, that seems to be more willing to engage. And they talk a lot about increased drug use and, and drug addiction issues. We've talked about here, where untreated mental illness and untreated drug addiction, where people just aren't receiving the treatment services that they need. And that this plays out on, on the buses. These are anecdotal comments, I don't want to represent them as, as data. But I think we're in a really different environment. We see it in a lot of other places than on our bus system where there seems to be a, a little bit more acting out than what you might, we might have seen two years ago. And that's an observation, that's a subjective observation, but it's an observation that I'm hearing from our bus operators as, as anecdotes.
Tough information, thank you, that makes sense. Any other questions, thoughts? Oh, Riva, go ahead.
Yeah, I just, there was a question about, you know, how leadership is responding. I think that came from Judy, Councilmember Judy Johnson. One of the things is related to fair enforcement and some of the feedback that we got from the employees was that we need to put people first, you know. You know, when we do our policy, when we make purchases on behalf of the region, we're not only focusing in on equipment and supplies, but we're focusing in on what the people need. And we did, as a Met Council, go to the legislature and ask if we could get some relief by reducing the fair enforcement being a felony. So that way our officers could focus in on some of these more pressing issues that especially we're dealing with, with the pandemic. And we were proactive with that request. That speaks to working in partnership with other entities. Because this is all of our problem to solve. And I just wanted to mention that if, and if, and if Chair or Wes wants to speak to that.
Wes?
Sure, you know, I think, you know, we've been trying for, I don't know how many years now to change the law and, and with the support of the council and the support of the governor to change the law to make fair citations no longer a misdemeanor and, and make it more like a parking ticket, which we think is appropriate. That a lot does allow, takes police off of the fair inspection work and that allows us to use civilians to do, to do fair inspection and it does free up police time. That both frees up police time to do other things. It also has a great, brings a greater presence, civilian presence, official presence on our trains. And they don't have to just be fair enforcers, they can also be helpers. And it really serves as monitoring a presence. We've learned from, from our own experience, from the experience of other transit organizations, just having an increased presence on the train is a deterrent. Official presence on trains is a deterrent to crime. And I think we can do that with, with an increased civilian presence as well. And that's how we're trying to approach it. So the, the, the safety initiative really tried to do that in July. We're trying to hire, we're running into the same hiring problems with CSOs as we've had with police officers, but we've, we've decided, let's go ahead, even without the fair citation language change, let's go ahead and try to create that more welcoming civilian presence that can be more, create more of a deterrent to issues than, than having to really be a reactive police force like we are today. And then I want to go take that question to the issues of mental health and chemical dependency treatment. That, you know, we have a hat team that's won national awards and that, but this is one case at a time. We're facing systemic issues on, with respect to, to mental health treatment and chemical dependency treatment and care. We're seeing, we're the last door open and we're seeing people who are not getting the care and treatment they need. And it's a growing issue on our system because it's a growing issue in society. We're not the social services department. We're not, they don't want us to be the social services department. Police should not be the social services department. So we've been actively reaching out with Penupin County and with Ramsey County to find new ways to work better together to do that. But I think we also need to, to tell this story to the legislature as well about how the, how the effects of, of, of these gaps in the safety net really impact so much, so many parts of the, of the social infrastructure that we, that we have. And I think, you know, we're trying to do that, but this is not a problem that's going to be solved one case at a time. Although I want to compliment, I believe the last number I heard of, we've, we've, we've connected over 400 people to vouchers, to our voucher program because of the relationship that we developed in our own, in our own organization between the HRA and between the police department. So I just want to double down on your comment, Councilmember Shambless, that, that these partnerships are going to be really important, but we need, we need systemic change to address some of these issues because it's going to, we can't keep up one at a time. We still have to do one at a time, but we can't keep up one at a time.
And I guess I'd just add to what the general manager just said, that these are complex issues. But regarding the decriminalization of fair enforcement, you know, I think we made great progress at the legislature and we had enjoyed some bipartisan support in both the House and the Senate. So I, I think it makes so much sense that I'm confident that it will pass. But we have to be persevered to ensure we continue to make the case and to go forward. But the community service officer program, because it's, you know, we're, we're in an employment recruiting challenging time that it, it certainly, it's good to start working on that. Because I think that in itself should be supportive of our, of our, of our police force. Councilmember Lee, you got a comment?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. I have a quick comment. While we are thinking about attrition issues and issues of recruitment and retaining folks, I, I want to share, I, I think I shared this before, especially with the chair and with the chief and with Wes a year, over a year ago. But one month after the, the killing of George Floyd in July, I was invited to join legislators on a tour of the, the, the sites in the East Metro that were impacted by the, the uprising. And it was in, in July and we, we started in the Midway area and we ended up on the east side of St. Paul. And during the stop at the, what is now Allianz Field, as we were ending that tour for that section, Representative Jim Dabney, who represents a part of Minneapolis, he pulled me aside and he said that as, as you, as you work to hire police officers at Metro Transit, if you get transfers from, from Minneapolis or anywhere else, make sure that you guys remain, maintain a high standard for officers moving, transferring in and coming in so that we don't get officers who may be bad, bad apples in, in their existing departments. And so I, I, I want us to be cognizant of that too, that no matter what our issues are with retaining and, and attrition, that we, we continue to maintain high standards of hiring with the best practices for training officers. Thank you.
Yeah, great point, Councilmember, Wes?
Yeah, I, because the chief's not here, I want to say, tell you what I know he would say, because I meet with the chief every week. And one of the things that he emphasizes over and over with me is hiring for character. And I, I, I know that that's, that's what he says. He says, we're struggling getting people through the academy, but we're not picking just anybody. We're trying to pick the best. And, and I want, I just wanted to, to say that in, in the context of your comments, Councilmember Lee, that, that it's an emphasis the chief stresses with me almost every time we meet.
Thank you.
Great point. Councilmember Cummings?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You know, and a couple of these points have been made, but it's really distressing to me to hear that such a large percentage of PD feels unsupported by this council. Because I would guess that to a person, this council, I can't speak for everybody, but boy, I think that most, anybody would do anything within our purview to show our support, to be the support. If it's frustrating, I don't know, you know, providing funds and approving things like that is great, but it's not, it's hard to recognize. And Wes, you can go to them and say, gee, it's, you know, we got this because the council approved the funding for this and that. I am a relationship person and I think that one of the things that has been really challenging in our remote meetings and so forth is this lack of face to face interaction. When you were able to do the graduations and so forth in person, a number of council members were able to go and interact and I think that was hugely valuable. I think, I think we really, really, really need to find ways. And I, I like what you're saying, Wes, about finding other ways. And I like some of the suggestions about invite us in to see equipment or whatever. But if on some sort of a regular or rotating or really deliberate, really intentional basis, there were opportunities that maybe it's coffee in the morning and it moves from garage to garage or come over and have a cup of coffee in the afternoon or whatever. Obviously, not all of us can do all of those things, but if one or two of us can make one of those each month or with whatever frequency you're able to do that, but just to represent the council, to be a presence and to let them know that we do in fact care and we do, we are cognizant of the challenges and so forth, however that can lay out. I don't, I don't know, maybe it's not garages, but wherever it can happen. But I think if you can come up with some creative, and I would think that in this group of creative minds, there will be some suggestions as to some things that we might be able to do. The ride alongs are great, but, but really some more social and, and a little bit more casual interactions where we can go in and talk to one another and be a face to a face rather than just somebody on a screen that somebody may or may not ever connect with. So I would strongly urge us to find ways to, to build those relationships on a really personal level.
Great, perfectly said. Councilmember Wolf, did you have another comment? I see your hand, is that backup or?
Yeah, it, it is backup, Mr. Chair, thank you. I, I, I have a little bit of concern about what Councilmember Lee said and how that would be. There are police officers that are listening in on this conversation. And I've heard that in some other cities as well, that, oh, you know, you might not want to hire cops from certain agencies because they might be bad apples and stuff like that. That's a really derogatory thing to say. The person who killed George Floyd is in prison. But portraying all the other people that work in those departments as potentially culpable and that is really unfair. And that's probably part of why police officers are a little wary of whether the council supports them. Because we expect our police officers never to stereotype, even if they arrest people over and over again, they're not allowed to assume that that person is a bad person. They have to treat everybody fairly and we need to treat them fairly as well and not stereotype based on, on what one person did. That really, I, I, I can't emphasize that enough, that, that we, we need to treat our cops fairly and, and not assume that because they're cops, they, they are culpable for what somebody else did.
Thank you for making that point. Councilmember Lee?
Yeah, thanks, Chair. Yeah, Councilmember Wolf, you know, with all due respect, I, I didn't mean to make a blanket statement, but if, if we recall that Officer Derek Chauvin was a police trainer. And so under his duties, he was responsible for training rookies, for example. And, and when, and in his, you know, in, in the example of everything that transpired, I think Representative Dabney wanted to ensure that if there are folks who, who might not be the best representatives of their profession and want to just switch over to, to work with us or for us and that we, we ensure that we just maintain a high level of professionalism and that we have, that we hire the, the best officers to work with us, regardless of what city they may come from. And, you know, I, I don't believe that all police officers are bad. And that wasn't the intention of my statement at all. Thank you.
Well, thanks for clarifying that. I don't know if Leah or Catherine. Well, thanks for clarifying that. And I don't know if Leah or Captain Deeds, you want to mention anything, but I think you have pretty strong standards, as I understand it.
Yeah, Chair, thank you. Thank you for that. Definitely, definitely. It's, it is undoubtedly difficult to hire, but I will say that we are not in any way lowering our standards. And I'd actually like Captain Deeds to maybe say a little bit about that because we just went through a hiring process where we have our five officers that are now in the academy. So, Captain Deeds?
Sure. Through the Chair and council members, just want to give you a little insight as to what we see when we are currently backgrounding potential employees for M T P. We still are maintaining a high level of standard. We want to make sure that we are hiring the best of the best. We have seen some individuals try to potentially take advantage of us needing staffing. So some individuals know that there are some undesirable things in their background that would limit them from ever having a profession within the law enforcement community. But they're still kind of trying to get into the profession now, knowing that a lot of agencies are desperate in trying, trying to hire in mass quantities. But we are making sure that when we are hiring, we are hiring those that we want to wear our badge and patch and those that we want to represent us and the Metropolitan Council. So we go through an extensive background process with the officers and make sure that we are hiring those individuals that we want to work with and that we want to represent us and wear our patch and badge and be out in the community.
Thank you. Let's see, any other comments? Councilmember Vento?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to make a point, and I hope I can articulate it in a coherent, sort of way. It's been a long day. I'm a member of this work group and I was particularly alarmed about concerns that that regarding favoritism or levels of stature, whatever you want to call it, within the department. And I just want to emphasize that when it comes to relationships within any kind of an organization, the flatter it is, the more comfortable people feel, and the more hierarchical it is, the tougher it is to build good, strong, trusting relationships. My background, the bulk of my career was spent working in education, started out as a teacher and then went on to work for what used to be the M E A and is now Education Minnesota. And as a teacher in Peter Lindstrom's hometown, Wilmer, I didn't recognize it at the time, but I do now, at the ripe old age of 67, that I had the world's best principal. And regardless of the fact that I was the union president and was sometimes a little tough to take, and the subject of a lot of conversations, we always had a good working relationship. And what I would ask of our, our higher-ups in, and I hate using that word because as I said at the beginning, I'd like, I like it to be as collegial as possible and less hierarchical. But I would ask that we do what we can to really build strong relationships, regardless of whether someone's involved in the union, has gone to the union for help as the union leader, regardless of what it is. I may have misheard what I, I think was coming through in some of the conversation when we, we had that discussion a few weeks ago, but I just believe really strongly that we're better when we're working together as a team than when we're siloed and we're layered and we're marked down for having been outspoken or defending a colleague. And I know I sound like I'm preaching, but I'll tell you that, that during my almost 30 years of union work, the administrators who accomplished the most were those who really had a team spirit and and really reached out to the entire team, not just to the ones that they felt the most comfortable with, but they reached out to the entire team. And whether it was hiring, staffing, communications, how you handle a grievance, whatever it was, it was always done in a respectful way. So if I'm overstating some things, I hope my colleagues will call me on it. But I, I just think it's really important, especially in this time when life is so stressful as it is. If we can't stick together, then we're really in trouble. Thank you.
Thank you too. And relationship between supervisor employees is just really important and that's a should be a supportive role. And I think we'll all agree with that in the council. And I'm trying to put my head around the idea of Suvento as being hard to take. So that doesn't really compute in my mind, but I appreciate your point. Anybody else have a question, comment?
Mr. Chair, this is Wendy. My hand is up again. I don't know if you can see it.
No, no, go ahead, please.
I wanted to to thank Councilmember Vento for her words. They're very wise. And and ask Captain Deeds what department leadership is doing to improve the the relationship with the rank and file cops and and, because, I mean, the survey was just last month. So what, what, what happens next is better?
Any comments at this point, Aaron?
Through the Chair, Councilmember Wolf, we are still working on what we are going to do to improve that. However, the one key component that we mentioned in the earlier slide was that we recognize that we definitely need to improve our communication from the top down. We recognize that there, the message isn't completely flowing all the way from upstairs down to patrol level. So we want to make sure that we are letting our employees know what's going on, opening that flow of communication and kind of creating a better environment for sharing information with, with everyone within the Metro Transit Police Department. So focal point right now, for sure, is the communication piece of it in order to make sure that we're all hearing one another and making sure that we're addressing each other's needs.
Thank you. Councilmember Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just briefly on this topic, since we're kind of getting into it. With this kind of data in hand and then the rich stuff that comes with it, the individual responses, of course, we can start tracking this quarterly or however the task force might be asking that to be done or yearly. Are these types of metrics then held as part of our leadership in the P D's review as it relates to, you know, their own, you know, individual personnel reviews? And I'm meaning that in a sense that holding, holding leadership at many of the higher levels accountable to really work on this in a, in a way that I think impacts them personally because that, that's what leadership is all about, right, where the buck stops. So we want to make sure that we support our, you know, all up and down the, the chain within P D, every department, quite frankly, but also hold, hold leadership within the department accountable and empower those in the other positions so that, again, they, they feel free to speak up and be heard. And I'm just curious, you know, if, if we see positive trends in coming months. Hopefully, we'll hear what's going on, but I'd like to hear it not just from leadership, but I'd like to hear it from the rank and file. You know, we've all been in various levels of leadership, all the way down to probably some of our earlier days in our careers. And yeah, there's a lot of different points of view depending on where you're at in the organizational chart. So I'd like to keep an eye on this, challenge our, our leadership in P D, the General Manager, you know, to put some strategies in place. I, I hear communications is one and I appreciate that. That's essential. Communications is both giving information, sending information, but also receiving information. So hopefully, leadership. I'll leave it at that, but I'd like to, I'd like to just, you know, keep some of these stats handy so we can see if we're making progress on them or not, however that would be best done by the experts. We will have most likely an opportunity like we did when we were brand new on the council. We will have most likely an opportunity like we did when we were brand new on the council.